Okay, we are back in session from executive session and there was no action taken. We have appointments. Excuse me. A, the Independence Recreation Commission, we have one opening. The applications are due by noon on June 18th of 2021. So if you're interested in stepping forward and serving on the Rec Commission, please look into that and we'll take applications. Especially if you have not served on a board or commission before, now might be a good time for you to put your toe into the water and step up and, and help us as we continue to move forward, filling these positions. Moving along, we have the consent agenda. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move we accept this consent agenda as presented.
I second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. All right, item five, items for commission action. Item A, consider authorizing the city manager to sign a Green Bush Energy Group Participation Agreement and Hedging Authorization and an Incor Base Agreement to Acquire Natural Gas.
Mayor, we had a meeting, a conference call today about the, the energy group that we are in. They are having to change our group from one company to another. They are not able to get the same agreement that we've had previously because of all the things that happened over the harsh winter, but they have gotten the best deal that they could. And I don't know if David Banks, he was going to call in, I don't know if he's on the line or not. David, are you on the line? Okay, I don't see him. But anyway, we are, we are requesting authorization to sign the agreement to continue with them. This did save the city from having outlandish bills during the freeze and it is along with several other school entities and other government entities and it has served us well and we would like authorization to proceed on that.
So this will basically, they will negotiate a base rate, a new base rate that we can be assured that it won't be due to wild fluctuation, it'll be something we can hang our hat on.
Yes, and it's going to be based on three to five years historical data and what they call normalize, they take out the extremes and it's kind of based on that, but they said they expect around a 20% increase in costs regardless.
Okay. And this basically is, takes into account the building D and Memorial Hall, is that right?
Yes, it's just for those two accounts because they're the only ones that use enough gas to be able to be eligible to be in the program.
Okay, all right. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Kelly?
This is a one-year agreement and we will be renewed next year about this time?
Um, well with Green Bush, yes, but the, the other company, this Encore, they are going to go out into the marketplace to see if there's any better opportunities and so we do not know if they will renew with the same company or not. They will review that at that time.
I understand. Seems like there's a lot of upheaval in the natural gas marketplace right now and so in a year we'll know more and so it's probably a good time to review it at that, at that time.
Yes, and the Green Bush has a committee that, that does all of that and the negotiations and everything on our behalf.
Yes, good.
How's their rate compared to ABMS?
There is a chart that is in your packet. It is, looks like this.
Yeah.
And basically what they're calling the district cost market is basically this cost because most of them are school districts, that's why it's called that. And then the, the, the blue is the, the price index and then the top one is basically if you were in the marketplace.
So the KGS is?
Kansas Gas Service.
That's the market rates.
Market rate.
And so you can see that the red line for the district cost is, has been consistently below that.
And what's the index price?
You were on that call, do you remember how I explained that?
I think that's per unit, per unit of gas, natural gases or...
I guess with the fluctuation that we saw nationwide that some municipalities were under, is there any way that, that we could kind of encumber or have a reserve that if we find ourselves caught in that situation, that we would have a reserve to pull from?
That's something you could look at in your budget process.
Okay. I noticed some articles of some of the surrounding communities, they were significantly impacted and it seems like, you know, just well, what we're seeing here with us, with our agreement with Green Bush, the, the negotiations and, and all, we're just uncertain where the market would be and...
We're just very fortunate we had this in place, so.
All right, any other questions?
I'm good.
I have no further questions.
Okay, Dan, I, can I have a motion, please?
I move to authorize a city manager to sign a Green Bush Energy Group Participation Agreement and Hedging Authorization and an Incor Base Agreement to Acquire Natural Gas.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item B, consider approval of the Central Business District Commercial Building, CBD, CB, grant request for roof replacements at 101 North Penn Avenue and 317 North Penn Avenue.
Mayor, the committee received two applications from George Nicely and Melvin and Marilyn Deschawn. The committee has met along with the historical group and reviewed these applications and has recommended approving these grant fundings for roof replacement in the downtown area at 101 North Penn and 317 North Penn Avenue.
The photograph, David, is not of 101?
Did I get a wrong photograph in there, Leonard?
Okay.
Which one are you looking at?
Uh, I think it's the 101 North Pennsylvania.
The 101's right there on your...
Oh, okay.
Here.
You can tell that the roof needs...
Yeah, okay.
I don't know what that picture is, Leonard.
It's 101 Main. of, or assess quality or completeness of the project as we also assess its validity of the application itself?
They, they inspect the project to ensure it was done properly.
Yeah, it, it, basically the building inspector, both of them were informed, the building inspector would follow the whole process. If you guys approve it tonight, he will issue the permits tomorrow and he will follow this whole process along with the contractors and document it all and to ensure that they follow, you know, the historical group, wanting to make sure that we don't go over the parafit and how, we had them go through how we're anchoring underneath the cap and so the building inspector will make sure that all of that is followed and document all of it for us. And then when the project's completed, he will then take final pictures and submit all of that for final payment that Lacy will take care of.
That's good.
Yeah.
So we've changed a little bit from the way the grant process had happened before. Tyler will be working?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
When, when does he review the code requirements, code changes since the buildings were built? And I know we've, our roofing permit has core samples required, just so the roof doesn't do...
Yes, and these are complete removals, so we didn't have to do any core samples. They're going back to the deck and putting a brand-new roof on each of them, so we're good there. So we did all of that prior to our committee meeting.
Okay. Yeah, that might be something on the, the form that they check help with if it's a re-roof, a tear-off or an overlay.
Yeah, yep. Any, any on a commercial, we do a core if they're not taking it back to the deck.
Well, some other towns and I've seen a couple here that have had pretty thick built-up roofs through the year and...
The problem sometimes is they don't always come tell us what they're doing and all of a sudden you see, smell the tar downtown and somebody's slapping tar, so.
Seems like a couple towns had some buildings collapsed based upon overloading and...
Yes, yeah, but we have pretty good roofers, they all, sometimes out-of-towners will sneak in and try to do something.
Yeah, I think they've all pretty much hit you first before...
Yeah.
The local roofers understand.
Yes, yeah, they're very good about contacting us.
Well, this is the first step in preserving our buildings is keep the water out of the roof and the roof structure and...
Yep.
That's good.
All right, any further questions, gentlemen?
I have no further questions regarding these two grants.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion, please.
I move to approve George Nicely's grant funding request for a roof replacement at 101 North Penn Avenue in the amount of $7,500.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
I have a second motion. I move to approve Melvin and Marilyn Deschawn's grant funding request for a roof replacement at 317 North Penn Avenue in the amount of $10,271.67.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Item six, moving along, discussion. Item A, discuss request of Larry Walker regarding a found shotgun. Chief, how are you?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. As you can see there, we have a, this is a piece of found property that was found less than 60 days ago, but the only time that firearms are an exception to our found property, generally we return found property to the finder whenever we can't find the correct, the proper owner. However, firearms and of course contraband items are accepted to that and if we can find the rightful owner, then we return that firearm to the rightful owner if they can legally possess it. However, the department policy and the city ordinance that was passed in, I believe in August of 20, states that we don't return found firearms to the finder. And several reasons for that, but we, we built that policy and recommended that ordinance because it followed best practices in law enforcement as far as handling firearms go. There are some complications, as you know, when anybody that gets a firearm is supposed to go through a background check, we're not exempt from performing those background checks. So even if we just hold a firearm, if you were to, if you were to hand us a firearm to hold for safekeeping for whatever reason, whenever you come to get that back, we're going to have to do a background check on you through the feds before we can return your own property to you and that's not our decision to make, that's the law. And in dealing with, I know you, you recall the firearm sale that we did, I believe in 2019, early 2020, as you recall, that was, I got a, I got a pretty good crash course in firearms law, working with the ATF on that project and we do not want to run afoul of any federal firearms laws and they're very complicated, so it's easy to do. And so for a variety of reasons, I, I recommend that we do not change the policy and I've explained this to Mr. Walker as well. Or the ordinance, I should add, it's in ordinance for the city.
Right. So it's basically based on, the federal government has pretty much determined as far as the law enforcement agencies, how to handle these particular problems that arise. It's their rulings that pretty much set the standard for what we have to follow.
Well, I don't know that there's a federal law, but we're following best practices and our, and we wrote our policy based on the policies that are used by accredited, nationally-accredited agencies here in Kansas. I reached out to police chiefs that were nationally, their departments are nationally-accredited under CALEA and we wrote, we based our policy and the ordinance that we recommended to you guys in August, we based that on CALEA standards, which are based on best practices and, and for risk prevention and things. One of my major concerns is that, as you recall, there was an active shooter down in Texas, I believe in the church shooting and that gentleman had been in, or that suspect had been in, been in the air force and he had gotten, he had been charged with domestic violence, but for whatever reason that was not detected, he was able to obtain a firearm. And so the air, law enforcement and the air force took a pretty bad hit on that and so I wouldn't, and we've heard of those cases where a firearm, some firearm-related crime occurs and then they, the media is quick to find out that, well, this police department possessed that firearm at one time and they let it back out into society. And so, you know, not likely to happen here, but it can happen. And, and again, I don't want to risk running afoul of some federal firearms law that I'm not aware of. And then it's also based on best practices, that CALEA is writing that policy that way for a reason and recommending that their agencies that are certified, or accredited are following that policy for a reason. And I'm not an attorney, so I would hate to take it upon myself to go against, you know, just to decide to do something that's contrary to, to a best practice in law enforcement.
So there are liability issues?
That's my, my main concern is liability issues, reputation issues, yes, sir.
Because if you return that weapon back, so I, I understand what you're saying.
I think this is, what you're saying is based upon our ordinance that says such property shall only be released to its rightful owner upon presentation of valid identification and documentation showing that the rightful owner may legally possess the same. And this is talking about firearms and ammunition. What's section 18 dash 452 F?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's what we're, that's, that's what we're basing the, that's what I'm basing our position off of and that's also what our policy is founded on. You provided a copy of our policy, but it, it says that found property except weapons or contraband that has not been claimed by its owner after 60 days may be returned to the finder, disposed of, retained for department use, or retained for sale at public auction. So it's found property except weapons or contraband.
So what I, what I understand is your recommendation is to follow the ordinance?
Yes, sir.
And it's presented to the commission then to decide if we want to make an exception to the ordinance on firearms.
My desire is that, I've been visiting with Mr. Walker for a little over a month now. Good guy, seems, I don't know him well, but I've been in contact with him several times and I, and I respect the way that he's conducted himself through this process, although we disagree, but he is a citizen of Independence. He is not satisfied with the response that he's gotten from me and so I have committed to him that I would give him every opportunity to present his case to a final authority if he doesn't accept my explanation and so I am here tonight to make sure that Mr. Walker's concerns are heard and that the commission ultimately does what the commission thinks they should do.
I felt after the last commission meeting when Mr. Walker presented to us that we as a commission should have a response to him and have an opportunity to hear the, the police chief and then look at what the ordinance says that we can render a decision or response to Mr. Walker's request and I, I see the, the chief's concerned and I understand what we've said in the ordinance and the only way I see we can protect the city is to follow the ordinance. And in the same sense, in a way, it, it does protect the, the finder of the firearm because we don't have any way to know the history of the firearm and it's like, when you put up your firearm, you're not going to put it in the bushes outside in the backyard, that there's some history that got the shotgun in that location and not only looking at protecting the city by releasing it back into the public, but also then the finder that in the future if something came up and it was determined that the firearm had been used in a crime, then we, by our release of it in, in essence have put the finder liable for response and, and action of something he had no control with. It's a, it is a hard decision, you know, we'd love to return that to the finder, but you know, for me, I, I think we have to stand on, on the ordinance and the recommendation of the chief.
Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, I have nothing to add. The ordinance made sense at the time that we voted on it and so I would support continuing to administer it as, as, as it was originally constructed.
Taking into account on your presentation, chief, regarding liability and other issues concerned with that, there's a reason why the ordinance was drawn up like it was, for protection of the city and the public and I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners that we stand by the ordinance as drawn up.
Well, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to work with Mr. Walker and make sure that his concerns were taken as far as I have the ability to take them, so thank you for hearing us both out on this topic.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Mr. Walker, I appreciate it. I had a chance to talk with you for a little bit also at the previous meeting, but I'm glad you did bring this forward to us. That's part of our job here to where there's, there's a conflict here or a difference of opinion, that you do have the right as a citizen to approach the commission and make your voice heard and I appreciate you coming and being upfront with us. You've been very good over the process with us, to the commission and to the police chief and I, and I thank you for that, sir. Moving on, excuse me. Item B, discuss 2022 budget expectations. Lacy, how are you this evening?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
So I just wanted to have a little bit of dialogue on what your expectations and preferences were as we jump into the 2022 budget season. I think the process has looked a little bit different each year as I, I find out what works and what doesn't and I develop my own internal processes. So if there are specific items, like if you prefer to, to review the capital budgets first and then maybe payroll and then operating, things like that, preferences that will help me along in, in my budget preparation and help me get the information to you in, in the best way that will be helpful to you, I, I just wanted a little bit of direction and discussion around that.
And I think the, review the capital projects first.
Okay.
Because each year we're seeing changes, we're seeing changes in the economy, we're seeing different emphasis that have happened through the year and if we could look to make sure that what we established as priority the year before, if we're on track or if we need to shift it if something comes up and, and we see roads are a big issue, that we need to put more money there or water sewer line breaks or, you know, just whatever, I think starting at that point might be the governing factor and then, because some of that could affect your manpower and your salary allocation to accomplish some of the tasks. We're in a change too though of with, with the, our city engineer and public works to understand how all that's gonna, gonna change in the coming years, so I think starting with capital projects might...
Okay. I, I will say right now, I will take the, the capital projects list that we, we went over in our special, our retreat that we did at the beginning of the year, that was kind of a forward-looking 2021 plus 2022, so that will be our, our base point. Where, where it becomes a little bit challenging just due to the timing is we, we are at the beginning of an opportunity where we'll be receiving the American Rescue Plan funds that, that can be put towards infrastructure, so we will start planning on that, but I, I won't have all of the pieces, it's still, it's still moving and very fluid, so, and I don't have all of the information that we need to make decisions on that, but I will try my best to incorporate that into the 2022 budget discussions as we move forward. But, but I agree, I think capital work session would be appropriate and then if we could, what will help me is if we can discuss any major operational changes or, or things like that, different resource allocation. One thing that I will try and do this year is, I had each of the departments write out a mission statement and a goal and so what I, I hope to give you is a, a budget workbook that you'll be able to see how the, the numbers in the budget reflect our, our goal and our purpose and our mission and that the numbers will tell a story of how we're going to, to bring that to life and, and reach our goals as a community. So I, I'm going back and forth on formats, so that, that, that part's taking me a little while longer, but if I have a good idea of the, the overall vision, I think it will be helpful.
I like that. It gives us a chance to set some goals that are achievable by the department heads and then we can look at it at the end of the process to see if, if that mission statement was fulfilled and the goals were met. And I like the idea of the flexibility because everything is fluid. You know, we had the, the issue with the southeast sewer lift, which wasn't planning on that big expense to come up, but it's something that happens, so there's always something down the road that upsets the plan.
Yes.
But as long as there's flexibility to where we're able to reallocate resources from one area, even temporarily, to shore up another area until we can come back to that and stabilize and then continue to move on. We may delay it somewhat, but we don't put it off the radar and, and forget about it, so.
Correct, but this, this would be, my proposed approach is less detailed, more overall vision and so I think it will be easier to, if you look at it in all the detail, you, you guys will be asking me tons of questions of why this line was $10,000 last year... be asking me tons of questions of why this line was ten thousand dollars last year versus, you know, if it's thirty thousand dollars this year. I, I think, I think if we look at it from a, you know, step back a little bit, and look at it as a more high level, it will make the process easier, but I want to make sure, because I know in years past you asked me for the, the line-by-line detail, which might not, you know, things might change, accounts might go away or be combined, and, and it might lengthen the process considerably if we want to go into the, that fine of detail.
For the first meeting, we should look overall very broad, and we don't need the details, but at the end, we should see the summary and the, the details at that point. Isn't that what you were talking about, or?
I mean, I'm happy to provide the details, but it just, you know, last year how you would be able to look at, I don't know, pick an account, I don't know, I can't think of a good example right now, but the, the, the account numbers will very likely show, you know, a, a large amount or a very small amount and a, a big swing. The overall numbers won't change, but they will be reallocated appropriately to correct accounts. Does that make sense?
I just, we need to look at what we had last year, and then look at what you're talking about, changing, we just want to make sure we have enough information that we understand, but we don't need to know that there's going to be a hundred and twenty-five washers and six ounces of bolts.
I think if I show you what I mean, you'll, I, I think it will clear things up. I, I think I'm going to be giving you the information that you're looking for.
Because last year, each year you've made it easier to understand, and, you know, I think this is kind of, I see our first meeting to discuss the budget, and we need an overall view, and then refine, but it's hard to talk about something that you see and I see in our mind without the diagram.
Lacy, if I might add that, that every year there's, there's some price pressure from our, our vendors and other types of cost impact, but really, what I'm looking for is some kind of summary of what's driving cost change, and if I understand the cost drivers, I'll be happy with what you present in your summary. But if I can't understand what's driving cost, we're going to have to drill down on that, and so if we started with that, and understanding what's driving cost, or the significant cost changes, then, you know, we can get that out of the way early.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay.
Good?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lacy. Moving along, item seven, reports. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to look at the Independence Historical Preservation Resource Commission and REC Commission reports, and you're good with those?
I have had a chance to review them, and I am okay with the reports as presented.
Okay. The May twenty twenty-one sales tax report, and I see that was a huge jump from looking at it over the last ten year. This is the highest amount, if I understood that right, over that ten-year period, and we had gone from the previous year of a hundred and sixty-six, seven ninety-eight, if my glasses are reading right, to two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars, which is quite a jump. So that's good, that's good to see, and that would be actually two months back, so that would be March. So that's, that's a good indicator. With everything continually to open up, and there's more, evidently more government resources coming available, I look for those sales taxes to maybe not reach this particular level for that month, but I look for them to continue to move forward as things open up, so that's promising, promising for the city of Independence, I'm, I'm glad to see that.
With the, the stimulus money that's been introduced into the economy, that's probably where the, the jump is coming from. Once that, that stops, we'll probably drop back to a, a normal amount, or, are our expenses going up likewise, that we won't be able to capitalize on any of savings since, or how does, how does that all balance out?
I, I would not say that we've necessarily seen a drastic increase in prices, other than, you know, building material and supplies. We do have an increased cost, looking at next year, like we talked about earlier, for, for gas, for Memorial Hall and City Hall, but the, the other price increases, I would say, have been pretty on, on par with what we typically see.
So with the, the price coming in, it will give us a, a surplus going into the next year from this?
For sales tax?
Right. From our revenues, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and what I'll try and incorporate for, for next year is, you know, we've, David and I have been working on a cash flow statement that shows, you know, every year, not every year, but consistently for the last few years, we've had more collections than budgeted in sales tax, and so particularly in the building and facility category, we've got excess funds sitting in that cash balance, so I will include a potential spend down of some of that, that excess funds that are, you know, they're restricted to that particular use, so if we want to put it towards some, some large project in the future, we can, we can look at those, those cash balances.
I saw an article today talking about the inflation rate in different areas, new vehicles, used vehicles, that some of them are up, furniture are up since nineteen seventy-six, they haven't seen the increase that we're going into, and just as we start into budget, maybe, you know, looking at where those areas could affect the city, so we can build a, a reserve to kind of take advantage of the, the excess now, instead of looking at spending it, but, you know, the gas price, I guess, from last winter that talked about earlier, we don't know, and it's out of our control, and all we know, once we use it, we got to pay for it.
And that's why we keep the cash balances that, that we do, we use those as a, as a reserve, so, so that is precisely why we do that, and regarding, you know, vehicle purchases and increases in prices like that, I have seen a lack of availability of vehicles, definitely. We were lucky enough that we, we purchased all of our vehicles that we budgeted for the year very early on, so that did not affect us.
Yeah.
And, and hopefully, you know, we may have to move the timing of our purchases for any vehicles that we've got slotted for twenty twenty-two, you know, we might end up having to purchase those at the end of twenty twenty-two due to availability, but we, we stay pretty on top of, of that looking.
Just to kind of continue on that logic, though, it is important that we, we do not, that we understand our target for those reserves, so that
Right.
So that as these extra monies come in, if we're literally backfilling, or if we're still backfilling reserves that were overspent in previous years, we need to complete that process before we begin to, to spend the excess.
Right, and it is a little bit different speaking about sales tax reserves, because, you know, yes, a portion is put into the general fund, but the majority is restricted, restricted use, and, and you have to use it for that purpose, so.
Yeah, I, it seems like we've been ahead of, ahead of the game, you know, with our vehicle replacement program, buying new instead of used, and, and everything that we've got good control. We're not being forced by the checkerboard method of wait till we're threatened and then jump, but it's a chess game of planning and looking, this will stabilize at one point, and if we've got our new vehicles purchased and wait till the end of the year, look at price drops, and, so, okay. Thank you, Lacy.
Thank you, Lacy. Item C, we have a reminder of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, a special commission meeting, and at that point we will discuss the water plant master plan, review that, and then item two will be possible budget work session, and that'll be at nine in the morning, okay? All right, that's a reminder, and then moving along, item number eight, Kelly, city manager comments, what do you have for us this evening?
It's been a really busy few weeks, but I don't have anything specific unless you have questions for me.
I do not.
Are you good, Leonard?
I'm good.
I'm good. All right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hayes?
I have none this evening.
Commissioner Keflis?
The report was just for our information.
Yeah, that's just for your information.
Okay.
All right, and I have none also, and we don't have any public concerns, so we are moving to item number eleven, an executive session. And Kelly, how much time are we going to need on this?
Fifteen minutes, Lacy, you think? Yeah, fifteen minutes.
Okay. I make a motion for an executive session. I move that we recess for an executive session for consultation with the city's attorney regarding possible litigation pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen, B two. The open meeting will resume at?
Six forty-seven.
Six forty-seven. And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. That'll be Kelly, David, the commission?
Lacy.
Lacy.
And Seth Jones by phone.
Seth Jones by phone. All right, the commission meeting is back in session, there was no action taken. Next on the list is an adjournment, I make a motion that we adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Thank you.